...special meeting here of both the Carroll County Commissioners and the Council. And as we do on almost every one of our, well, on every one of our Commissioner meetings, I'd like to invite you to join us in the pleasure of leisure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There were some things that had transpired that I became somewhat alarmed about and wanted to have a joint meeting between the Council and the Commissioner and you folks to make sure we've got things ironed out. Now, the first thing I'd like to say is that all three Commissioners are absolutely dedicated to keeping Carroll Manor a door. And I have heard, I think, every one of the Council members say the same thing. So I don't see that we are here today to close anything. What we're here for today is work on a problem that we have, okay? And because the staff and the manor itself is managed and run by the three of us, but the bills and the payroll is paid by these people, we have to work together. And that's the way that county government works, is that we have to work together to get anything done. Because, these are probably tired of me saying this all the time, using this, but even small government like ours here in Carroll County, all government seems to be like that it moves at the speed of a glacier. So, by the time we meet and then they meet and we get action back and forth, it takes a long time, sometimes months. And we don't have that time. So we have to do it today. And so, for the Council members who I, and my fellow Commissioners, who I have burdened with an extra meeting here this month, I apologize, but I think we need it to get things going. To start things out, I just have a few comments I want to make. I think everybody, Council and you and my fellow Commissioners, need to know to get us, to know my viewpoint anyway, of what I think is reality, and to get us started on the right path. There has been cause for alarm with Carroll Manor. People are, somebody trying to get in the window?
It's only 115 degrees.
Could be the beer.
Jack will get it.
Look at him.
Yeah. Oh, goddamn.
Ah, thank you, Jen.
We've been-
You're dropping like flies here.
We've been, we've done that before.
Okay, as I started to say, can you find a seat anywhere? I don't want you not to. If you want to drag in one from out there in the rotunda, would you want one of those ones? Get right up here. Yeah, is the cooler bath with the door open there? Is that door open? Would it help?
It could be.
Let's try, just leave the door open. The Council here has, none of them were involved back when we had the first problems with the danger of the manor being closed, not a one, other than our citizens who were concerned. They have inherited, though, a legacy that has caused distrust, distrust. There have been Council members who did want to close the manor. We have had, I know Martha's told me several times about one who walked through the building there, the only trip that she ever visited the manor, one time, and the only response she had was, "We shouldn't be in this business. We don't need to be doing this," and wanted it closed. They, there were things that happened back there that were not correct, that were done incorrectly. And it has caused distrust and it has caused pain to the manor and its functioning. I have to go back to, I've been around here for over 20 years now. I started out on the Council, went to one big long table, we all sat around down here, and I sat next to the Council President, whose name was Gordon McCain. Now, back in the days of Gordon McCain, he was a pretty iron-fisted ruler, really, of the Council. And he, I have enormous respect for Gordon, because he was a man of integrity and his yes was yes and his no was no. And you knew exactly where he stood all the time. When he was in office, there was none of this, "Well, the Council and the Commissioners can't get along, and you know, I don't know why they're always fighting, and we have all these problems," and things that you would read about and hear about. Didn't happen, because Commissioners knew that when Gordon said, "This is the position of Council," that was the position of the Council. And when he said, "This is my position," you knew that was his position. You knew where you stood. After Gordon retired from it, we got real different than that. And along the line, let me give you a couple of examples. When the land was sold to Indian Packers off the county farm property, it was sold for an aggregate of $450,000, wasn't it? Yeah, I don't remember exactly. It's been several years ago. Claire, do you remember how much it was?
I thought it was 500.
475,000.
475, okay. Anyway, it came right down to the signing, to the sale of that, and I refused to sign to be, sign it over, unless that money went to the manor. I've always been fortunate, my people that I've worked with, never had a Commissioner that I, that we didn't work together well. And at that time, both Commissioners agreed with that. And so, there had to be some bargaining with the Council, and they agreed, "Okay, we'll put it in a special account for the manor. That money will go in there just for them." That didn't mean it went in a special account for the manor. When I took that at its word, it did not happen. What happened was, it was put in a special account that dissolved at the end of the year and went back into the general fund. And when I complained, I said, "Oh, there's no problem with that, because we're just appropriating it again on the 1st of January back out." You all can see the problem with that. Sooner or later, somebody's going to forget to appropriate that the 1st of January. If you look through our accounts today, Beth knows, she can figure out exactly how much of that money is left, but I can't without Beth. I can't find it. It's not, there's not an account I can go to and look up and find that.
Can I say something in there?
Sure.
They had a ordinance that said that they had to return it to County General at the end of the year, but they also would redo the resolution or something to that effect and put it back in the fund. It was on, it's on the fund. And then we had to transfer it back in, and they were supposed to take it back out and put it in their fund. And that did not happen. They refused to let us do that.
Yeah, thank you. It kind of reminds me of an old Amos and Andy show. Most of you aren't old enough to remember Amos and Andy, but I do.
I do.
Kingfish is selling something, I forget what, but he's handling the lodge money. And between the in and the out, and there was more out than there was in it, and first thing you know, he had no money, okay? So this is a deal where between the in and the out, and all of a sudden, there's no line that says Carroll Manor, how much money. Another thing that happened was, on that same transaction, there was nothing said initially about it had to go for maintenance only. Somehow that was added right when the account was created. Okay, "We're going to set this account aside for maintenance only." We Commissioners hadn't decided that. We thought that money went for the use of the manor, okay? Other things that happened is taking the staff to all part-time, so there's no benefit package, the restriction of funds as far as hourly rates, the, well, okay. When Gordon McCain was head of the Council, when I first got my education, I learned from, there were really two people, Gordon McCain and Claire Ryder here. Those are the two who taught me how this works here, okay? Was right during the time we started an ambulance service. Many of you can remember before there was an ambulance service in the county. Initially, the funeral homes all hauled people to the hospital. Before that, I suppose you got loaded in the Model A and took off, but the funeral homes all hauled them. Then, under Governor Bowen, and I am not smart enough to know what all he did, but during his time, it became volunteer ambulance services. And every community was starting a volunteer ambulance service. Well, the problem with that is before long, you're down to just a few volunteers and you wear them out. And so, it came down to us on the Council, are we going to take over the ambulance service? And are we going to make it good with? And we all agreed, and again, my Commissioner, fellow Commissioner, Pete Tarry, was saying that we wanted to make it varsity, DA team. We didn't want to have a B-team type of people coming out to pick you and your family up. We're going to do it, we wanted to do it right. And I remember Gordon sitting at the end of the Council, or Council table there and saying, "Remember," he says, "I'm not telling you any of you guys how to vote, but remember, once we start it, we're in for it." Meaning that it was going to continue. We committed ourselves to it and it was going to continue. And it's going to be expensive, and it is expensive. You pay a lot of money for the ambulance service. Yes, they charge you when you go. It doesn't cover the whole cost, and there's people who cannot pay. And so, the county has to pay. That is exactly the way that the manor was back then. It was just part of the tax rate and it was carried by the county as a whole. During the time when we had people who wanted to end it, they said, "Okay, we're going to pull it out, special from everything else, and we're going to make it have to stand alone. It has to pay all of its own expenses, because we're not going to put any money into it." That wasn't the way it was set up. For a hundred and some years before that, we'd always had a county home. Before this county home was built, we had a county home. I don't remember that, Steve, but we did have one. He thinks I'm ancient. Anyway, the, it was always part of the county structure. It was something we paid for, a home. It was changed. So these guys all inherited a system of where it has to pay its own way. So when we get to times like COVID, when you can't bring people through or families through and let them see how beautiful it is and let them walk around through it and understand everything, you can't get people in. You're not adding to the population. And of course, always have an attrition of population there. You have to resupply. So we got down pretty low, which is why I understand why the Council here, these people felt like they didn't need to put as much money in the budget as had been when there was a full or close to full house for food. And I don't think there was, even though that budget was cut, and I didn't get a chance to read this all the way through since I came in, I don't believe that was the intent, was that we're not going to fund food for people. It was, if you need, this is my opinion, if you need more money, this account will come up with it. We will, we'll get it. I'm sure that intended the majority of the county. Anyway, I can understand why people got concerned when the food budget was cut, because they had learned the distrustful of the past. And when the position of Assistant Director was cut, that was another bad signal. And I know Martha, who I love, and I think she's a wonderful person and has given her life to that facility and the people there, more than the people than the facility, because she loves the facility too. She got scared, because it looked to her like we were going back down that path before. And I have tried to reassure her that we absolutely are in favor of keeping it a door. And I have heard nothing but that from these people, that it is not a deal of the manor is going to close. Which brings me to the real purpose, and I'm sorry if I went too long there, but the real purpose of this meeting, which is we have something that's come up. And that is Martha has told me that she absolutely is leaving by December 31st. Now, and I also was told, and I've asked you about this, how it's come along, but I was told that by Martha, that there was a possibility she might have to leave by November 30th. How has that worked out? Do you think she's going to be here?
I think she'll be here until the end of the year.
Until the end of December? That's wonderful. Because all of a sudden, I and us through me, we're faced with a situation of Martha may be leaving in the next three or four weeks. Nobody is in the position of assistant and can take over her role, which is a substantial role, keeping all the record-keeping, applying, doing all the, keeping with federal guidelines, state guidelines, all those things besides just the management itself, going in there and helping out in the kitchen, doing everything that she does. And we don't have anybody trained to be number two. Nor do we have money to hire somebody at number two to start their training right away. So my whole purpose of calling this meeting was to get us and them together at the same time, so we could try to work this problem out and figure out what we're going to do. Because we have to have somebody in there as Martha's assistant and training now. So I'm sorry Scott's not here, I would be saying, I'm going to turn it over. Josh, are you in the device?
Tracy is signing off.
Tracy, Tracy, I'll turn it over to you. What can we do?
Well, has it even been advertised for the assistant?
Yes, it has.
How many applications have we applied?
I've applied. I applied September 30th. I'm James Smith, my grandson's daughter, and I've worked, I've worked for her here for 10 years. And I know there's two other applicants, they're both current employees, they're bringing in both term applications. One in July, and one the 1st of November. None of us have been contacted, yes or no?
I think that's because, I don't know how many applicants you've got, I knew, I know it was advertised somewhere.
It was two years.
And that-
How long was it vacant?
It's been asking me to advertise it, because when Martha started asking and saying, "I need somebody," that she was kind of worried about advertising, I've put it on the web.
Okay.
And it's been on the web for a long, long time.
Okay.
Well, one point to the question is, is we haven't been contacted yet. But what is your intent, now that you know she's leaving for sure? Are these people going to apply also for the administrative position now?
That's a good question.
I have an application. Which I'm seeing a shake of the head, yes. And, and I'm concerned with, when you hire in an administrative person, that administrative person's going to have, I would say, experience, and is she going to need the training?
Claire?
Yes, yes.
Tuhan? I'm afraid she won't let you call it on anybody or talk to anybody like that.
I'd say that somebody that's worked there prior, which I know that there is one person that stood up and spoke, that has worked prior there and has a lot of experience, I don't know how many years she worked there.
Two.
Thank you. And so, I would think that she would pretty much know the runnings of the in and outs. Now, I don't know about the bookwork, I don't know about that end of it, but I do know that she was a very qualified person there and she was, I mean, I know she was there all hours of the day. And cares.
I also remember her being out there. I worked for the highway department for 30, 40 years in the entire Grisley. And we went out and worked a lot. I love it. It needs to stay open, but it does need some help as far as paid for the employees and insurance, anything like that. I know you're wanting to cut budgets, and I'm saying the pay needs to go up. But my mom is out there, I know every resident out there, I've met them all, they feel like they're at home. I walk the halls, see every one of them, speak to them, I'm out there.
I think we've answered that question, that nobody wants to see it closed than sitting up here.
Okay.
So what the question is, is she's saying that she would hand in an application for the administrative position?
Yes.
And do you think you would need assistant?
Definitely, especially because the sense of sit low, and it's going to take someone getting out and promoting it and being the face of Carroll Manor to, you know, get with social workers at the hospitals or go to the VA or wherever. And, you know, so somebody's got to be taking care of the office work and the residents stuff to be cared for, but somebody has to get out there and spread the word. We have beds, we're not, you know, we're not closed, we're open.
So our major problem that you're looking at right now is, don't you think you have to have an administrator and then you have to add on that assistant?
Today's the first day I've found out she's leaving. Just around, just around.
But is there money in this year's budget, 2022, to pay some of the training for Martha before she leaves from what they can train on?
We actually need to hire an assistant and a manager.
That was my game point. I think right now, your biggest thing is getting that administrative person hired.
I think one of the biggest problems is we defunded the administrative assistant position, and I would like to see us not, not defund the administrative position.
I know you had some scarcity during the budget process, but their budget wouldn't pass, would not pass state board of mechanics. That's why the action was taken as it was taken.
Well, what, what we could do-
Their budget has to be able to fund.
In 2022, we could do is take money out of the riverboat to fund the assistant position or-
Nobody answered my question that I had on the table.
Your question was, why don't we hire, where are we going to pay the person that we hired as the, as the top person?
No, the current question is, are we going to hire administrator or are we going to hire assistant?
What is the most important position that you're looking at hiring for right now that you know Martha is leaving pending November or December 31st?
What's the most important position we hire right now? I would say an assistant.
Don't you want an assistant for the purpose of moving into the administrative role?
No.
I agree.
I think if I were to apply for administrative job, I would want to come in and I would have some experience.
Right.
I would not want an assistant trying to tell me how to run the manor.
Somebody that's been running it for 20 years that's going to, you know.
Especially with the assistant position, not being filled for how long?
It's not fucked over?
Does Medicare or Medicaid fund anything at the manor? Because if it does, that adds a whole new realm of experience that you need to look for.
I don't think it helps, I think it just helps individuals themselves pay for some of the stuff that's out there.
Okay.
Okay, I don't, okay, we're not talking about salaries right now, so let's not throw salaries into the discussion today.
I will respond to that. That's critical for the success of the administrator and/or assistant. There is a shortage of employees out there because physician pays four or five dollars lower than standard positions anywhere else at entry level, provides no benefits, and the hours are limited. Staff, we cannot keep staff out there because they do not make enough money, they are living, if they work there, they make poverty wages.
I understand that, but right now, we're talking about an administrative position and an assistant.
And I'm saying that it directly connects to your comment, to your question, for the success of the administrator, they need a staff, a full-time staff that's fully funded, and it also needs to be at, keeping the staff at a level where they're doing everything they can do, instead of the assistant cooking or the assistant is out doing an aide's work or the cook's work, the person that puts away the laundry, that, that's what needs to happen for the success of the administrator.
And I'm not saying I don't agree with that, but right now, the problem at hand is being an administrator to run the facility.
Okay, Tracy, we're all willing to listen in. Why would you suggest that we do? What was your, you would hire a whole bunch of them?
I would, I mean, as soon as possible, but I know, do you have to wait until she leaves until the 31st to advertise that position?
You can advertise and then have a starting date.
And if we advertise now-
I would go after, I would go after an administrator before I would go after an assistant, because you want that person to step into that position and be able to run it and evolve it like they want to.
Is there still money in the assistant superintendent line for 22?
Yes, there is. And I want to explain that. We didn't, we didn't get that done. You guys voted on it, but when you do it, it's just like an additional, a reduction has to be advertised. I sent it to the comment. Sorry, Debbie, but they messed up.
It's not my fault.
I know, but they did not advertise it on the day that they were supposed to do it. So it has not been approved. So the money is still in there for 2022.
Diane Brown was there for a year as administrative assistant, as far as NOLs and all that. They knew, they, they were interacting, that they knew a lot and most all the same thing they both, she and Martha, had been there for a long time. The fact that there is so much that goes on there, and it is a 24/7 facility, that you, you need two people for that alone, but they share really a lot of the same duties, you know, it's doled out, because the volume and the detail of everything that happens there, the inner workings, everything that happens there. So I'm just saying that, and as far as who's administrative, who's assistant, well, I don't know. But I'm just saying, those two positions are necessary because of the nature of it being a 24/7 residential facility and there's only a lot of detail. I volunteered there, I resigned my position there, because I retired, as a part-time cooker in a local college, but I go there and I volunteer. And I've worked as the Director of Carroll County Council and Agent for six years. I also have worked, I came from Indianapolis, I was there, I was there 25 years working for DFR and I've had 35-plus years in social services, but I just know the volume that happens there and the detail. And I just feel that both positions are necessary and it's shared, you can't sit there and, you know, as things happen during the course of each day-
You can't sit there and, you know, as things happen during the course of each day, dole out who knows what, because it just has to get done. And I've been in that position multiple times.
And I can attest to the fact that Diane Brown was an amazing assistant. She never sit, I never saw the woman sit down once. And Brenda's right, it takes two people.
Yes, it does.
But whether the census is fifteen or forty, there is enough activity and interruption, phone calls, deliveries, inquiries, that it takes two people. Your, the assistant or administrator is called in at eight o'clock at night, nine o'clock at night.
Yes.
This summer Martha was called in at midnight and stayed then until six o'clock the next night, because of the needs of the facility. Um, I don't see how it can run without the two people. Um, and Martha and Diane were amazingly well together. It was, it's rare that you see two people that can just pass it on, they read each other's minds is what I'll say.
And I don't think we're saying that that, that it's not needed. But we had to budget on the funds that we were allowed to. We can't just put money in a budget that we're not allowed to do. So you have to find where you can put that at. Well, with only fourteen residents, we picked the two that would be the less, you know, devastating as of the time right now. But that's not going to say that in February, we have to do an additional for food, or we have to bring in another position. But the priority problem right now is you're looking at a facility that's not going to have an administrator. That is the problem we should be working on today, is finding an administrator.
I think that's one of the problems that need to be worked on.
And there are a lot more problems after that, that we need to work on.
My opinion, Tracy, you're going to get the administrator in there, because you don't want to hire the assistant, then like she said, the assistant telling the administrator what to do, maybe they don't get along, so let's get the administrator in there quick and fast, and I'm sure Martha's good to stay, if she can retire, she can come back and stay on her will to help this new one, then once this new one gets established, they can come to council and say, hey, this is what I'm needing.
I agree with you.
I think that's what we need to do today.
I've never heard of a new, this new position, or a new person coming into that doesn't have bigger and better and brighter ideas. And a change of delegation, and a change of, so this new administrator may come in and change things up.
Absolutely.
And the fact right now, folks, I'm a big social media person, I look at a bunch of it. There are right now thousands of people saying that Carroll Manor is closing at the end of the year, you know how bad that hurts, that facility? I responded to it, I said, as a commissioner of Carroll County, I am not closing this. And all I get is hate mail.
And I love this, I don't know who started this, but I think I told you at the last meeting. It's really sad that if it comes down to people here, we are closing it, how the uproar will start. But it's being kept open and nothing would probably be said. So I watch this, because where's this? This is getting poured out, that it is staying open. There have been two residents in the last two months, and three in the last six. So there is some improvement. And hopefully that new administrator that comes in is a Facebook junkie, is a website guru, and but the best thing is the word of mouth, the marketing energy about how good this facility is, and that it's going to spread like wildfire, just like it's spread like wildfire that it's possibly going to close.
During COVID, nobody could even do this.
Hey, we've got a couple here in the meeting to speak, Clara, can you finish some wisdom?
I'm looking at this as though I was in your spot.
Okay.
And if I were in your spot, what I would probably like to see done is hire, right now, there's money for the rest of the year, hire an assistant, with the idea that they go in, they start learning all this bookwork, which is very difficult. I'm having a little knowledge of it, I know it's a lot of work. I would let that person be training. You people are the supervisors, uh, plus Martha, if you see that person is doing a good job, then you may want them to admire, to apply for the administration job, and let that person hire an assistant that they could work with.
The only problem with that is over there, if they don't work out as the assistant, we just wasted that money for the one we didn't hire them again with.
Well, I think-
And it might work out, I'm just, I don't know.
I- I think they have candidates, uh, that they believe at this point that would work as an assistant, and have the potential to also move into administration. So actually, anybody walking in off the street that has no experience with an assisted living and dealing with elderly people, that doesn't mean that they're, they may have a lot of ideas, but that doesn't mean that they're going to be efficient working with older people.
This job, this job has been available and has been advertised for years, where were those people who had assisted jobs?
Martha told me she's got two applications, and one of them's right there, and the other is Jamie McKay. And Martha's, I think she has a lot of confidence in, in either one possibly, so.
I would like to know how it was advertised.
That would be a question for Martha, I don't know that. When you are the administrator, do you run this facility a hundred percent best?
I think there are rules that apply on how county positions are advertised.
It's on the web and it's advertised down there in the courthouse on the first floor. And it's been there, it's been there for forty-five days, so.
Oh, I can't access the county website, I'm talking about this.
What about hiring an assistant that's qualified to be an administrator? Knowing that they would be taking over if they do well. By the way, the assistant, you know, would already be qualified as an administrator, not just an assistant.
If it were six months, it would make sense.
We want to train her though, that, I mean-
She's sitting there, they're saying she doesn't need training.
Well, I listen, I've done administrative, I've done payroll, whether it was, I worked in the treasurer's office, I worked at Delphi Products, and I, I helped learn the payroll and stuff, I know it's not the same programs. And can do the office work, but somebody that, they go in there, Martha believes, that administrator has to be licensed by the state, and all, all these other things, you know, there's got to be times to do that.
And that's what I'm saying, you have maybe forty-five days.
Right, we waited till the very end of, like, when we're really in trouble, and now we're trying to solve this.
Okay, I'm, I'm not understanding, Tracy, you're saying we've got forty-five days, and then we just bring somebody in and they're in?
It's, you're probably, it's like you should, if she's going to have to, bringing her as an assistant is not going to lead her into getting what they need to be the administrator.
You can, you can hire somebody that already got the license.
I think if we have people in-house that are familiar with the operation, if we have three in-house that have applied, if they begin consideration, I think somebody should be hired as an assistant with the idea that they'll set in a head job, then I think that this is a twenty-four, twenty-four hours, seven day a week thing. I feel strongly that you need an assistant. But I think that the person that's hired as the head to take over as the head in January should be able to, uh, work to take to her assistant.
Couldn't always hire, hire the new one as the assistant, knowing that they're taking over.
I'm sorry?
We can always hire the assistant, knowing that they're taking over, that can be part of the, the deal.
If we have people in-house, they should have the knowledge and the background, and they should take the amount of months training, I agree with you, that they're hired knowing that that position is going to open up, that's my opinion.
Some amount of training would be needed, some.
What?
I believe, I believe some amount of training would be needed.
Well, sure will, but I think if you have somebody from in-house, knows the offer, knows the operating, and I'm not saying they don't need training. No, I didn't mean that at all.
Right.
But, yeah.
We have two here, go ahead, here.
I've been out to talk to Martha a couple of times recently. Um, I worked there in 2010 for several years, when all that other mess was going on. Martha's overwhelmed, it is not a one-person job. It hasn't been since I've been going out there for over twenty years, I mean, it's just a two-person job. If you put an assistant in there now, that can also work with Martha, to be learning some of the things that she might not already know, then I think that's to your advantage, an assistant maybe would cost you less than putting a administrator in there for now. And, um, it, it just, even for two months, it may not sound like much, but right now, they need all the help they can get. And as far as census, census go up and down in healthcare, my whole life I've been in healthcare. And it's just something that happens, whether COVID or not, census fluctuate.
I come to Martha today, and she feels like, she thought that the position in 2022 had been defended. So now Beth is claiming to blame everybody that it's not been defended. So now, we can go to Martha and tell her this, and then she's, wants to be involved in picking the new person to take the role as the assistant, and that's what I'm in favor of. Like you're saying, getting an assistant in there, to learn the ropes.
Yep, so they can be learning. Because it's a big job.
Yep.
The job, the job that Diane did, I don't know how the woman did it, she was on the go all the time, at all hours of the day and night. And she knew every aspect of running that place, every aspect of it.
You will. I've been a nurse for forty-five years, and I can tell you right now, I know the ins and outs of my hospital inside out. But if I had to take over and be the director of nurses right now, there is no freaking way that I could do that without a buttload of training. Because the Medicare and Medicaid system, the healthcare system in general, and I'm dealing with this on both ends, both as a giver and as a taker right now with my parents, it is loaded with bureaucracy and defunding and funding and laws and regulations and rules and stipulations and blah, 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 blah. I could go on for days about what I've been on in the last two months, just trying to get help from my parents. You are looking at certifications, you are looking at trainings, you are looking at levels. A person can't just walk in off the street, even if they've been there forever and say, hey, I want to be the head cheese. Because there is so much to it, it's not like it used to be twenty or thirty years ago, it has changed. It is horrific on even the hospitals and the big box store medicines, they can't even keep staff right now. Lafayette's having trouble getting CRNAs for the surgery department, because there's so much nonsense that has to be gone through to get them even approved to take the position, that it's just ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. Yes, somebody does need to take this position, and they need to be trained thoroughly, absolutely thoroughly, because there's too much to learn.
And you're not going to get that in thirty days?
I get that, I'm just saying, it's, it's maybe a little plan to think that we could put that administrative semi-person in here and hope that in a month that they can be ready to go. It's going to take a long time before that person is trained, I agree, you know, I get it, you can only have one, but think carefully.
Thank you.
I would add to that, not only is this person going to need to know the healthcare side of it, I too have, my sister works in a nursing home, and my mother is in that nursing home, so there is a lot of red tape. This person needs to be able to help the families. In addition to that, this person is supervising employees, they need to know payroll law, they need to know human resources and labor laws. Um, because there are things that you can't do with your employees, because, I mean, you can't let them work and not be clocked in, you can't, they can't volunteer, you know, things like that, so that person also needs to know the human resources side of being the leader out there. So there is a lot that this person will have to know.
And that's absolutely true, there's the front of the house with taking care of the residents, and making sure things are smooth. And then there's the back, the technical side, payroll, and making sure that you're in compliance. And it's not just that, it's building maintenance, I mean, having someone come in and make sure that the, the doors are working, or the doors are malfunctioning. The, the vacuum cleaner's not working, so it has to go, the Smith vacuum unlocked yet. Martha's doing all of that, I mean, there's, it's so thinly, I, I mean, the staffing is so thin, there's no one, there's not a maintenance man there that can take the vacuum cleaners, the Smith cleaner. It's Martha, and then the next time she's going to lock it, she drops the vacuum cleaner off. There's two sides to it, and it's absolutely necessary that there are two people. I want to hear more about this riverboat funding money that was mentioned earlier.
What?
What about?